Yeah.
You get you that.
It's true.
By the way.
It's really.
That.
This is.
Is it?
Oh.
In.
In.
July.
I think.
Yeah.
What's our?
State.
You.
So.
Yes.
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay.
That is, Mr. Shaw, I have two questions you want to share with me.
Okay.
I think we need to record along with the show.
All right. I'm good, buddy. How are you doing?
I'm doing good.
They're great. Thanks for asking. There's now three of them.
Three.
Actually, you look at.
Won't he do it?
I'll always show all this stuff.
Eight, three, turns nine in two weeks.
Oh, my God.
And she's her pop pop best friend.
July, I guess.
Yeah. And then two months old.
Wow.
There we go.
Okay.
I think my wife went to labor during your April. By her call.
Really?
Yes. Wait, you said you were born in June. No. I'm doing my oldest July.
The newborn was born April.
I saw we have two month labor. I was like, oh, my gosh. No.
That's happening. Because it's.
It's.
Like.
Yeah.
Right?
I'll tell you ahead of time. I'll tell you.
So.
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
First, I want to thank, uh, many men and more too, Mr. Darius Peoples for being here tonight. Uh, welcome everybody to the Winslow Township Board of Education regular board meeting of, uh, Wednesday, July ninth, twenty twenty five. Public notice of this meeting was given to all board members and associates in a notice dated January ninth, twenty twenty five. Adequate and electronic notice of this public meeting has been provided specifying the time, place, and manner in which this meeting is being conducted. Was advertised in a courier post, posted in all schools, the administration office, the municipal building, the library, Bud Doodle Center, Edgewood Acres, Elm Town, and the Winslow Township Post Office. Mission statement. The mission of the Winslow Township School District, a large, diverse, and growing community, is to educate and all students to become independent, lifelong learners, critical thinkers, and caring and competent members of their community. The district, in partnership with the community and in a climate of cooperation and mutual respect, will provide an academic environment which values excellence, uh, diverse excellence, diversity, and encourages students to strive for personal excellence and assist them with, uh, in acquiring knowledge, skills, and attitudes necessary to contribute positively to a rapidly changing world. Roll call, please.
Mr. Clark? Mr. Clark?
He's not there. Ms. Peterson, that's it.
Okay. Ms. Redden, here. Ms. Claude?
President.
Ms. Martin?
Ms. Martin will be absent tonight.
Thank you. Mr. McManus?
Here.
Ms. Peterson?
President.
Thank you. Ms. Pitts?
President.
Mr. Thomas?
Present.
And Mr. Shaw?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Can we stand for a pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Claude, could you please read the twenty four, twenty five district goals?
Yes. District twenty four, twenty five, uh, district goals, student achievement. Continue to implement best practices for delivering instruction to students. This shall include conduct weekly administrative walkthroughs to monitor teaching and learning, consistently review student assessment data to guide every direct teaching, continue to provide supplemental activities, i.e. tutoring enrichment periods to address student deficiencies. Benchmark assessment for ninth grade math, language arts. Number two. Create a safe and positive learning environment for students and staff. Strictly enforce the district's student code of conduct. Focus on upper elementary students to modify student behavior and early grades and the early grades. Reinforce positive behavior in a specific and genuine way. Approach discipline with care, respect, and the desire to see the good in all students. Number three, increase parent caregiver and community engagement in education. Provide opportunities for two-way communication with district stakeholders. Continue with communication cust- custorium. Focus on refining our communication methods and messages to better market our school. Continue with our public relations with the community.
Thank you, Ms. Claude. Dr. Clark, do we have any awards or presentations?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Um, spoil any correspondence?
No correspondence at this time, Mr. President.
Can I have a motion to approve the board meeting minutes, regular meeting from Jul- uh, June twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, open session?
Mr. President, I approve, um, I move that we approve the following minutes of our Board of Education meeting, uh, regular meeting which is held June twenty five, twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, open session.
Twenty second.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Redden?
Yes.
Ms. Claude?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
The motion has carried.
Moving on to our board committee reports. Mr. Thomas, do we have a athletic committee report?
No reports at this time, Mr. President.
Um, Ms. Claude, is there a citizens advisory committee report?
No, citizens advisory will be meeting on tomorrow on Zoom, um, with the all of the CAC meeting, um, members. Um, I would like to say one thing in regards to the athletic committee. We are in August. Keep that date ahead for the I N G game against Winslow Township's football team in I N G. This is going to be a great,
Mm-hmm.
stumping, great game to start off our season for the school year.
What's the thing?
Um, I don't know the exact thing, but I'll make sure, um, I get that out to everybody. All right.
Um, do we have any, but I know Ms. Martin's not here, but, uh, so I'll, I'll move on from the education committee because I don't think we have a report from the education.
No, we don't.
Um, Mr. McManus, marketing committee?
Present at this time, there is, uh, no update.
Okay. Um, Mr. Redden, operations committee?
At this time, Mr. President. You know, uh.
Okay. Um, Mr. Pitts, policy committee?
Mr. President, um, at six o'clock this evening, um, industry, Mr. Davis, um, Ms. Claude, and myself meant to go over, uh, items that we will be discussing at the actual, um, policy committee meeting to be held in caucus.
Okay. Um, Mr. Thomas, anything from the two township committees?
Nothing at this time, Mr. President.
Um, the planning board will be, be meeting, um, next week on July seventeenth. So until, until our next board meeting, I'll have nothing to report for the planning board. Moving on to the superintendent's report. Can I have a motion to approve the superintendent's report, uh, on top of page three to the middle of page six?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the superintendent's report as it appears, beginning the top of page three and continuing through to the middle of page six.
Twenty second.
Any questions?
Uh, I have a comment with President, if I can.
Yes.
It's just on number thirteen and fourteen. These are, I'm looking at the approval of Winslow Township high school hosted girls' basketball tournament. That's, that's a great honor to, to bring to our school, who want to host some type of events. Along with number fourteen, that track meet that's going to feature mixed four by four hundred and four by one hundred races. You know, and us being like the number one track team in the country in my book, that should be a great event that brings a whole lot of attention and a whole lot of correspondence. I just want y'all to mark that or something, two, two events that doesn't happen all the time, and it's a great induction to, to what we've been doing in the last past, uh, five, six years in Winslow.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Any other questions? If there are no other questions, roll call, please.
Ms. Redden?
Yes.
Ms. Claude?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Motion has carried.
Moving on to the business administrator board secretary's report. Well, do we have any modifications?
No.
Um, so, um, from the middle of page six to the bottom of page thirteen, can I have a motion to approve the business administrator board secretary's report as is recommended for approval?
Mr. President, I move that we, um, I move that we approve the business administrator's board secretary's report as it appears, uh, beginning at the middle of page six and continuing through to the middle of page thirteen.
Have a second, please.
Twenty second.
Um, any questions? No questions, uh, roll call, please.
Ms. Redden?
Yes.
Ms. Claude?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Motion has carried.
Moving on to the personnel section of our agenda. Ms. Boyd, is there any, uh, modifications to that portion?
Yes, Mr. President, on, uh, A one A, we're going to strike that.
Okay.
What page is that?
Page fourteen. Set to name, number one, and then A under number one is the first item on the chart.
Okay. Is that the only one?
I get to do the addendum.
Okay. All right. All right. Okay. Um, so can I have a motion to approve the, uh, personnel report as the superintendent recommends it for approval with the striking of letter on number one, letter A, on the personnel report?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the, uh, personnel report with modifications as it, uh, appears, beginning page fourteen and continues through to the bottom of page fifteen.
I have a second.
Twenty second.
Any questions?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Um, on page fifteen, number five, the central office administrators employment contract. Can you explain to me the exhibit, um, X one, one, eight, colon, five, um, for the assistant superintendent contract, please? I was under the assumption from the meeting prior couple of weeks ago, um, when we did the reorganization, and, um, I posed a question in regards to, um, the assistant superintendent, um, being on for two thousand twenty five, twenty six, and I was told that she was out, her contract was out until September the first. And now we see.
That's what it is.
That's what it says.
That's what it is.
Beg your pardon?
That's what it is.
This is, it, this one.
Says July first, twenty twenty five to September first, twenty twenty five.
Okay, but we're getting ready to approve for a contract. It ended on June thirty, two thousand twenty five. Am I correct or am I incorrect from the memo that I saw?
Yes, but we have to approve the contract for the superintendent, assistant superintendent, until she retires.
Okay, well, I just need a clarification.
Yeah, that's what I'm, okay.
Don't beat me up.
I'm not. I'm letting you know. All right.
A lot of people.
From others, huh?
Yeah. Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't a move to say no. It's just I need a clarification.
Here comes the vote.
Is any, any other questions? Mr. McManus, anybody else?
No, sir.
Okay, just making sure. You good, Ms. Claude?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay.
This could, this would have been avoided if when I did the sidebar before I called and asked about this, I would have been told that.
Did you call?
Not you. I called someone that's on this board, asked them to help me. Understand it.
Well, the one person, yeah.
All right. Roll call, please.
Ms. Redden?
Yes.
Ms. Claude?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Motion has carried.
Moving on to the addendum. Everybody can take a couple seconds to look at their addendum.
Oh, Mr. Shaw, there is one, uh, there's actually additional information on the addendum.
Okay.
And it's on page three.
Okay.
Number nine. Um, so number eight, we're doing the approval to, prove to apply for the twenty five, twenty six I D E A funds.
Okay.
Um, and then, uh, number nine, we're approving to apply for a consortium agreement through the borough of Chiselburg. So we put that on for twenty five, twenty six. In the afternoon, we actually got the amount. So their basic award is thirty six thousand five hundred and thirty four.
And this goes on on item number nine?
Nine, item nine.
Okay.
And then their, their preschool is two thousand one hundred and fifty three, and that, that came out right after we sent it to step. Thirty six thousand for basic, thirty six thousand five thirty four, and preschool is two thousand one fifty three.
Yeah. Does everybody write through their, uh, addendum? Do I have a motion for approval of the superintendent's report on the addendum as the superintendent recommends it for approval?
Mr. President, I move that we, uh, I move that we approve the, um, superintendent's report as it appears on the addendum on page one, um, Roman numeral one, letter A.
Twenty second.
Uh, any questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Redden?
Yes.
Ms. Claude?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Motion has carried.
Moving on to the board secretary's report. Can I have an approval for the board secretary's report as it's recommended for approval by the business administrator board secretary for the top of page, or, yeah, middle of page one to the middle of page four with the addition, uh, on item nine, um, for the basic, uh, approval of thirty six thousand five hundred and thirty four and the preschool, uh, amount of two thousand one hundred and sixty three?
Fifty three.
Fifty three? Sorry about that.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the board secretary's report as it appears on the addendum, beginning with the middle of page one with the addition, uh, additional information that was added, uh, on page three, letter nine, through the end, which appears on page four, uh, the middle of page four.
Twenty second.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Redden?
Yes.
Ms. Claude?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Motion has carried.
Can I have an approval of the personnel report as the superintendent recommends it?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the personnel report as it appears on our addendum, beginning at the, um, middle of page four and continuing through to the bottom of page five.
Twenty second.
Any questions? Uh, roll call, please.
Ms. Redden?
Yes.
Ms. Claude?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Motion has carried.
Moving back to our regular agenda. Ms. Boyd, is there any, uh, open, uh, open public records acts requests?
Yes, we did respond to two between June twentieth and July first, uh, Martha Devo from Virtual Rehab. She requested physical therapy information from the May thirtieth, twenty twenty five, uh, occupational therapy R S P and the May thirtieth, twenty twenty five, speech therapy R S P. Um, and those records were supplied. We also received a request from Ed Ubedera. And I'll ask for forgiveness for this pronunciation. And he wanted the history on the reference project. Um, he wanted the bid tabulation, including passionate crisis names and addresses of uh, bidders, along with the previous award of contract specifying who won the project, whenever it was last bid upon, and this is for reference only. He said the bid, the current bid is not open yet. They're asking for the big results from the last time uh, the bid was out. Then he gave me a forensics, and he, he was looking at the championship rings for the track. Uh, we did compile that information and submit it.
Thank you, Ms. Boyd. Moving on to informational items. Do we have any informational, uh, items tonight? I have.
Disappoint you.
I have one.
Okay.
Um, in everybody's, uh, folder, um, there's a, and I sent it out on, on an email as well. Um, there is a list of tentative dates, um, for the county school board meetings, um, this year coming up. So, um, for reference, so you can make plans, um, as we move into the next, uh, school year. Uh, so you can get ready for county school boards. All right, um, that's all I have for that. Moving on to old business. Anybody have any old business?
I, I have a question. I'm old business. I know we approved the audit of our I T. Is there any progress, any updates that can be given on that?
We don't have any additional information, um, Mr. Thomas, but I will check tomorrow, and I'll find out where we are, and I'll report that.
Thank you so much. Very appreciate it.
Anybody else for old business?
Um, Mr. President, this is, um, just, just a curious question. I know usually, uh, the board does participate in the various events that the township has. Um, this past part of July, um, the township had, uh, the school board had a table. Now, we don't usually have the table, uh, and, and it was unmanned, uh, and I'm just, uh, I'm just curious as to how did that happen? Because the board was not surprised at that. And as it turned out, uh, the table, you know, we hadn't been bringing out tables, tablecloths, tent, and there was nobody there. Chairs and tables, nine tables.
Nine chairs.
Nine chairs. Thank you, Ms. Claude, because Ms. Claude did come there also, but I'm just, I'm just want us to be aware of that, uh, when we do have the township events and if the board is going to plan to be there, then the board should be made aware so that we can prepare for it.
Yeah. That, yeah, I, and I was there with you as well, but, uh, so, so, um, we did man the table, but it was something that we showed up and were surprised to see.
Yes.
If I may, Mr. President, um, that was one of the, um, applications that we had, but, uh, during when the communications committee met, that was not one of the events that we picked in order to be able to be set up at.
The communications committee.
Oh, marketing.
Oh, marketing committee, okay.
So, yeah, so somewhere in, in the lines of communication that somehow that got set up and, you know, we got to make sure that all those lines are, are communicated properly so that way, you know, our, our district employees don't set up the, uh, tent for, you know, because if nobody would have shown up, then we would have had a table with nobody there, they would have wasted their time.
It looks odd, too.
But else was a caveat, uh, Mr. President. I was there at, at early in the morning, from four o'clock on, just to make sure that everything went according to standards of the district and to make sure that our employees were well represented. So I was there that whole time. It wasn't like there was, no one was there. I was there to make sure that everything went according to.
But my point was that the board didn't know that.
Yeah, and the point was, but, 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 you know, I just wanted to let it, it wasn't like we abandoned them, because I was there, um, all day that day.
But on another note, the Fourth of July, uh, event went off without a hitch and the high school overall was a great, uh, venue for the Fourth of July fireworks for the township. So we did have a great, great celebration for the Fourth of July, so that was a great time for everybody in the community. Um, do we have, do we have anything else for new business? Okay. Moving on to your favorite part, public comments.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Winslow Township Board of Education highly values the input of citizens in making the important decisions that affect the children of our community. We believe in the rights of citizens to observe board meetings, to ensure that all of our citizens have the opportunity to attend school board meetings and offer comment, and to ensure that the board can conduct the important business of the district. We ask that speakers follow the guidelines for making public comments. The board secretary will recognize those individuals in the audience who wish to make comments. We ask you to respect the following procedures. All members of the public attending school board meetings must treat each other and the board with respect. Please state your full name and town of residence. Please limit your comments to four minutes. In the event that you have a question that cannot be answered, please submit it to the board with your name, address, telephone number, and or email address where you can be contacted, and your question will be answered within a reasonable time. Lastly, individuals offering citizen comment are not permitted to make personal attacks on any district employee, board member, other testifier, or member of the public. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Long.
You're welcome.
Can I have a motion to move into public comments?
Motion, um, to move into public comment?
Twenty second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Ms. Boyd, do we have anybody signed up for public comments?
Yes, um, Tiffany Austin.
Hi, my name is Tiffany Austin, and I'm from Sicquaville. Um, we had the, uh, pleasure of actually sitting next to the, um, Winslow board members and met a few of the board members. Um, I'm a part of Kingsway International, and we actually had a table at the, uh, G T event. And, um, one of the, uh, programs that we have is our bully stoppers program. Um, and despite, you know, s- sitting with, uh, board members, we had an opportunity to share with you guys what it is that we do. Um, and we really like very much to be able to present, um, our program within the Winslow Township Schools. Um, we do a lot in regards to youth development, um, funding parents and youth together. Um, we did have, actually, I had the opportunity to do an assembly at the, uh, school number six, which was very well received. Um, I actually had just finished our little clip of the participation that the, uh, students had. Um, and one of the things that a lot of times we, we look at bullying and, um, violence, and we don't necessarily connect the two. Um, and I know all school districts have a mandate to talk about bullying prevention, but one, one thing that doesn't always happen is that individuals don't necessarily connect bullying, sometimes, um, the violence and mental health issues. And so what we do collectively is really look at those so that we can get to the root cause issues of that maybe the children maybe have it in the home or other issues that are going on so that we can actually be a support to wrap around services that your schools already have access to, but they may not necessarily have the resources um, that are needed to connect the dots. And so that's where an organization like us comes in. We are a community-based organization. We that, we've actually been doing this as my husband and myself. Uh, we've been working with, excuse me, with youth for probably over thirty years. Um, and this is just our passion. Um, it's something that we know that our youth, not just here, um, in the state of New Jersey, but across the country, and talk to plenty of people. And, um, we really just want to, we have a packet of information that we have available of the services that we provide. It's classroom, it's also plays. We do, um, assemblies, as I mentioned before, but it's really looking at the different schools because all of the schools have different meetings. Um, we've worked with middle schools, we've worked with colleges, and we've worked with adult education. So, um, a lot of times we have young people who are bullied, um, and they grow up, they've never addressed it, and now they become adults that either bully or they're having mental challenges. And so we just want to have. And so we just wanna have the opportunity to be able to present to, whether it's this board, um. But also, of course, the individual schools so that we can meet the needs, because it's, we don't have a cookie cutter program. Um, because like I said, all schools are different, they have different needs. And you can have kid reports that say that there's no bullying. But if you have reports that show that there are other, um, violent or acting out from the youth. That's typically something else going on, and so we have the opportunity when we talk to young people. Where they may not talk to teachers, because that's a different level of authority, we, this is basically our uniform. Right, so when we go into a school, we present ourselves as someone that they can actually approach. And so they feel comfortable talking to us, they feel comfortable being able to. Share their information with us so that again, we can be the advocate for the schools. And so where they may not necessarily talk to the teachers, we give them that pushback to make sure that they can. Um, and that they should, but we wanna be that sounding board, that in-between of bringing together the families, the youth, um, their parents. Because a lot of times there's things going on in the home and they're not gonna tell anybody. So if we have, when we have the opportunity to talk to young people, um, we typically get the.
I'm assuming that's my time. So, but again, I just wanted to present that.
Ms. Austin?
Yes.
I'm happy to take any information that you have, so that I can pass it on to the administrators.
Thank you, Ms. Austin.
Uh, Norman Austin?
We're together, yes.
You're the silent partner.
Yeah.
And that concludes those that have signed up. Anybody on, uh?
Decided to resign.
No, okay.
Nobody else signed up for public comment?
No, and nobody, oh, waiting, correct?
Um, it's correct, I'll, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn public comment.
Mr. President, I move that we adjourn public comments?
Three seconds.
Would that? I will.
Do we have a voice?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Executive session.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President, we do have a need for an executive session tonight in accordance with the requirements of the local public meetings act. We will be adjourning into executive session on July ninth, twenty twenty five at approximately seven thirty five PM. The significance of July ninth is that it's the day before my birthday. Of the nine exceptions that we have, I, I, should I mention that? Of the nine exceptions that we have, we'll be utilizing item eight, uh, matters dealing with employment. Uh, and terms and conditions of employment with respect to the district's chief school administrator. And I would anticipate that we would be in executive session for approximately forty-five minutes.
All right. Can I have a motion to move into executive session?
Mr. President, I move that we move into executive sessions?
Three seconds.
All in favor? I know, this is a roll call.
It's a roll call. I was talking. Uh, Ms. Dredon?
Yes.
Ms. Claude?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
The motion has carried.
Let's go.